Apologize about our delay. Thank you for being very patient. We're going to call to order the April 22, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Macy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand if you can.
Happy Earth Day. I came across a quote today by Paul Hawken that I wanted to share because I think it speaks to the current moment and our relationship with our earth. He said, "When I'm asked if I'm pessimistic or optimistic about the future, my answer's always the same. If you look at the science about what's happening on earth and aren't pessimistic, you don't understand the data. But if you meet the people who are working to restore this earth and the lives of the poor and you aren't optimistic, you haven't got a pulse." As we are coming together tonight, may we be attuned to the realities of the world we've created while also being optimistic about our ability to create change. And may we remember we are responsible not only to the citizens living in Royal Oak, but also for the trees that surround them, the earth they walk upon, the air they breathe, and the water they drink. May we be good stewards of all of Earth's abundance. Amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm going to start off the meeting with a few proclamations, and I will come down to read those. First off, we're going to do the proclamation for Nurses Week in Royal Oak. So I ask Ms. Elliott, Ms. Stewart, Ms. Wrong, Ms. Aboob, and Ms. Bobo to please come on up.
Hello?
Hello.
This is a proclamation designating May 6 to 12, 2019 Nurses Week in Royal Oak. Whereas nearly 3.1 million registered nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession, whereas more than 4,000 nurses within Beaumont Hospital, Royal Oak, provide compassionate care and healing in our community, and whereas the depth and breadth of registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, whereas a renewed emphasis on primary and preventable healthcare will require the better utilization of all our nation's registered nursing resources, and whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component in the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients, and whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the American population, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technology, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services, and whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community, and whereas the cost-effectiveness of safe, quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an ever-more important component of the U.S. healthcare delivery system in the future, and whereas along with the American Nurses Association, Beaumont Health has declared the week of May 6 through 12 as National Nurses Week in celebration of the ways in which registered nurses who lead the charge for health and wellness. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Mayor Fournier and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim May 6 through 12, 2019, as Nurses Weeks in Royal Oak, and ask all residents of this community to join us in honoring the registered nurses who care for us, to celebrate registered nursing's accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show our appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during the week, but every opportunity throughout the year. And on a personal note, I have to thank you as well. My father was a temporary resident at Beaumont Hospital, and he was treated with utmost professionalism and care. My son was also a resident temporarily at Beaumont Hospital. I will be a resident at Beaumont Hospital here pretty soon for an upcoming procedure. So, you know, firsthand, I've seen the work that all of you do here through Beaumont, and the care and concern and professionalism that you have for our community members and all your patients. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any words?
Well, thank you. On behalf of all the wonderful nurses at Royal Oak Beaumont, I want to thank you for this. It means a lot. It's a very, it's a very wonderful career that we have, but it's very hard. They work very hard, the nurses, to make sure that they take care of you and your families in this community. So, thank you all very much. It means a lot.
All right. Next is a proclamation designating May 2019 Mental Health Awareness Month. Do we have Ms. Bunshu here?
I'll thank you.
So it's my privilege to read this proclamation. Whereas mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses, and whereas one in five Americans experience a mental health illness that requires treatment at some point in their lives, and whereas one in 10 children has a serious emotional disturbance, if untreated, can lead to school failure, physical illness, substance abuse, jail, and even suicide, and whereas May 9 has been designated the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and whereas stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illness often keep people from seeking treatment that can improve their quality of life, and whereas mental illness is a biologically-based brain disorder that cannot be overcome through willpower and is not related to a defect in a person's character or intelligence, and whereas mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people with mental illness to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential, and whereas mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life, and whereas the Oakland County Community Health Network and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring, empowering people and strengthening communities. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Mayor Fournier and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Royal Oak, and calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit to our city's increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness to promote recovery. Ms. Bunshu.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oakland Community Health Network appreciates this proclamation. What we really hope is that mental health is seen as any other condition. As we would go to the doctor for hypertension or diabetes, that we also see that mental health care is just important for our whole health of our bodies. What we also appreciate is proclamations and awareness like this also help reduce stigma so that people will go into treatment. And we much appreciate this proclamation on behalf of OCHN, our providers, and the people that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have a proclamation designating May 2019 National Bike Month and May 13 through 19 as Bike to Work Week. Ms. Davids? Ms. Davids is our community engagement specialist who has been instrumental in making sure that, you know, the community is more aware of bicycling, its benefits, how to be safe, and she's done a tremendous job working with multiple different agencies and doing a tremendous amount of public outreach. So, I'm going to read this and then allow you to be the recipient. Whereas May is National Bike Month, sponsored by the League of America Bicyclists and celebrated in communities from coast to coast, and whereas May has been designated as Bicycle Month for 62 years to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and encourage more people to try bicycling, and whereas the League of American Bicyclists, bicycle clubs, schools, parks, recreation departments, police departments, hospitals, companies, and civic groups throughout Michigan will be promoting bicycling as a leisure activity as well as an environmentally-friendly alternative to the automobile during the month of May, and whereas riding a bike is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation, and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion, and whereas education of bicyclists and motorists as to, whereas education of bicyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all road users, and whereas the creation of an all-ages and abilities bicycle network is essential in creating transportation system that is suitable for people of all ages, abilities, to safely and confidently ride a bike, and whereas the city of Royal Oak has worked diligently to promote bicycle usage with community outreach educational programs, implementation of bicycle lanes designed to increase usage to commute in the city of Royal Oak and to surrounding communities, and the continuation of creating awareness and opportunities to engage residents in the activity of bicycling. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Mayor Fournier and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim May 2019 as National Bicycle Month in Royal Oak and May 13 to 19 as Bike to Work Week in Royal Oak, and urge all to recognize the importance of encouraging and supporting the use of bicycles in Royal Oak. Ms. Davids, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
All right. I'm out of order.
Yeah, this one's first.
I believe you are right. The Outstanding Customer Service Awards are, I am out of order, which is typical.
Could I have Officer Eric Cherry and Harold Stone come forward, please?
Mr. Cherry, we keep seeing each other up there. Once every quarter, I have the privilege of presenting our Outstanding Customer Service Awards to two employees who have provided exceptional service that demonstrates Royal Oak values and codes of conduct. This time, we had 12 nominations which came in from both the public and from coworkers, and the winners were selected by the customer-centric culture team. Officer Cherry. Eric Cherry is a member of the Police Department. He received the nomination from Police Chief O'Donoghue because his actions exemplified customer service. According to his nomination, on January 30, at 08:54 hours, that's the Police Department's way of saying six minutes to nine, Officer Cherry was dispatched to an unattended death. The deceased had a history of health problems and suffered from alcoholism. Officer Cherry had been familiar with the residents through prior calls where the deceased was taken to the hospital for alcohol detox and during at least one call where the spouse reported the deceased had been drunk-driving. The spouse of the deceased expressed to Officer Cherry that she wished for the deceased body to be donated to medical research. Realizing this would be a daunting task for the grieving family, Officer Cherry assisted the family in getting in contact with Wayne State's University's Medical School. He also assisted the family in preparing a basic permission letter to Wayne State to facilitate this. He also offered to bring a chaplain to the house, and the family accepted. The spouse expressed extreme gratitude to Officer Cherry's assistance and kindness that he exhibited during this call and prior calls to the residents. At one point, she actually asked for permission to give a hug. We think Officer Cherry exemplified the ROPD core values and the city of Royal Oak core values. The customer culture-centric team was impressed by Eric offering such compassion and such willingness to go above and beyond for Royal Oak residents. Thank you for your services, Eric. Harold Stone is an employee of the Royal Oak Animal Shelter. He received the nomination from the member of the public regarding his dedication to animals at the shelter. Harold devotes his life to the animals and their well-being. He often comes in on his days off to care for the dogs with special needs. Harold surely deserves special official pat on the back. The customer-centric culture team was impressed by Harold's dedication to the animals at the shelter and his kind, caring spirit. Thank you for your service, Harold.
How about one more round for these guys? We have so many talented people that have chosen to work in our city, and as residents, we're so grateful for your service, everyone's service, and it's always nice just to see, you know, people go above and beyond the call of duty. That keeps our community strong. So, thank you, gentlemen. We really appreciate it. All right. That brings us up to the Employee Years of Service recognition. Where's John? John, come on up. You're first. One year of service. You made it. Federally has made, has joined our, to head up our Parks and Rec, and he's done a good job his first year onboard, and he's made it a full year, which, you know, is, public service is hard. I know we got you from Florida, which also makes this much harder. He went from nice, warm weather to, you know, less-than-temperate Michigan. So, we appreciate you sticking around for a year, and we hope there's many more years to come, John.
Jane Marie Hughbanks. There she is in the back.
Jane joined our Treasury Department. She helped us out in a time of need when we had an unexpected departure. And Jane, you've been doing a great job, and we appreciate you sticking around for you. I know you've had many years in Treasury, and hopefully you have a fond opinion about what we're doing here in Royal Oak, and we really appreciate it. Deanna Braswell. Where are you? You're hiding. There you are. Many of you may have seen Deanna here. Melanie likes to take cruises from time to time, and Deanna has blessed us with her presence on several occasions and stepped right in and filled the role exceptionally well. She's been in the Clerk's Office for five years now, and you've just, I mean, it's always been a pleasure working with you, always a smiling face when we head into the Clerk's Office, and you've always been amazingly helpful when, you know, I could speak on behalf of the Commission whenever we need your assistance. So, five years and hopefully many, many more. Thank you, Deanna. Not sure I know this person. David Judys? David Judi? Oh, Judy Davids. Oh. Well, Judy and I just met. Judy has been an exceptional addition to the city of Royal Oak. She came onboard. We created a position in our effort to be more transparent, more engaging with the public, get a better pulse on issues and opportunities in our neighborhoods and throughout the rest of the community. We needed a person to do that. We needed somebody that just wasn't exceptionally brilliant, but that had a softer touch that sometimes the Commission or other folks in the city hall may not have. And she's been a very welcomed addition. She's done an excellent job. Everything that shines with the city, I think, eventually goes through Judy. We talked about her efforts related to bicycling, but she does much, much more. I can't even, I mean, if I go through the list here, we'll be here all night, and I don't want to do that. But Judy, it's been a real pleasure to have someone of your caliber and experience on the team, and we're so grateful for five years of service, and we hope for many, many more. Thank you.
My job.
So, before we begin public comment, just a few rules of engagement. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on Brown Iron Royal Oak LLC's request to approve a new plan of operation, you may wait until the public hearing is opened, and you can comment at that time, and the same rules apply. If you wish to speak tonight, either at public comment or at the public hearings, please wait to recognize by me, the mayor, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight. So, we do limit your comments to three minutes, and there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, don't hesitate. Feel free to reach out to us. Email's usually pretty good to contact any of your commissioners with your thoughts, comments, and questions. Please note that the City Commission won't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address the questions when the agenda topic is discussed, or if it's not on the agenda, the city manager is taking notes, and it'll be addressed through him or at another time. So, with that, who's first? Judge Meinike.
Good evening. Derek Meinike, Chief Judge, 44th District Court, 400 East 11 Mile Road. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Johnson, Mr. Gillum, Ms. Alice, Chief, I'm here tonight to welcome all of you to an event that we're going to be having at the 44th District Court this Sunday, honoring a Royal Oak icon, Judge Keith Leenhoutz. Judge Leenhoutz was a judge here in this, originally Royal Oak Municipal Court, eventually became the 44th District Court. He took office in 1959, actually at 34-years-old. He's the youngest judge to ever serve for the 44th District Court. And when he took the bench, he saw a system of justice that was broken. He realized that his options, when he had a person come before him, were really limited to jail time or fines and costs, which studies have clearly shown that those two options really don't do much in the way of reducing recidivism. So, instead of just accepting the status quo, Judge Leenhoutz set about changing the system, not just here in Royal Oak, but nationwide. He reached out to different community leaders, civic leaders, ministers, school superintendent, other civic leaders, and said, "We need to change this and show the people that come through our court that there's a better way." Not just tell them to live a different way, but show them how. And these community leaders all signed on and would volunteer their time 12-hours a month to meet with individuals and try to guide them towards better decision-making, what we would now call more cognitive-based training. Eventually, this is something that Judge Leenhoutz started to get noticed for, and Royal Oak in turn got noticed for. Reader's Digest covered it. In fact, in 1967, Look Magazine declared Royal Oak an all-American city. There was a parade and everything, and they noted that much of the reason for us being declared an all-American city was the work of what they called the young judge, Keith Leenhoutz. It's a compelling story, and one that is a uniquely Royal Oak story. And as a result of this, he spent 10-years on the bench and then took his program nationwide. By 1973, there were 2,000 courts that did the same program, over 300,000 volunteers nationwide. It was a movement. And really, the seeds of what are today's problem-solving courts were sown in Judge Leenhoutz's original concept of surrounding people with support. Our mental health courts now, our sobriety courts, our veterans' courts, all of those things can be tied back to Judge Leenhoutz and, in essence, tied back to here. So, we put together a project in conjunction with the Royal Oak Historical Society. This could not have been done without Miro Versaji, Mike Friends, the Board of Directors over there, and all of their members, and we were able to put together this project where we will have a permanent wall display honoring Judge Leenhoutz, and we are formally renaming the 44th District Court Probation Department the Judge Keith Leenhoutz Probation Department. It is, it is, once people find out about this, I always find that the people will come up to me and say, "I wish I would have known more about Judge Leenhoutz." I said, "If you live here, you know what he's all about, because he stands for everything that Royal Oak is all about: people." And at his core, the message was service. So, I want to invite all of you. I hope that you'll be able to attend. It's this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00. We'll have a short program as well as light refreshments. I'm also extending this invitation to anybody in the community. This is your court. Judge Leenhoutz's legacy belongs to you, and I hope that you'll join us. Thank you.
Mayor.
At the court, at the court, right at the court. Thank you. Mr. Ashley.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ashley. I live at Royal Oak Manor. Last Commission meeting, I mentioned that the Mitcham Chapel AME Church donated $1,200 to help cover April and May's $20 difference between 25 and 45 that we are paying for hang tags. I got a call from Alec Williams, a trustee of that church, last week. He said, "An anonymous donor donated $3,000 to cover from June to October that difference." My question to the mayor and the majority, when are you going to act and reduce the cost from 45 to 25? You have the legal right, all the other committees say you have the choice. This can be done in five minutes. You can put it on the agenda as 10A or 11.1, put it on and vote it and make it permanent. This is your civic duty to do this. You talk about doing stuff for seniors. You created a senior task force on aging and living in the city of Royal Oak, yet you turn the backs on the seniors by not lowering the price. So, my question to you is, when are you going to act in your civic duty towards seniors? And don't forget, this is an election year for some of you. Seniors are the largest voting here in Royal Oak. Be prepared. I told you, we are not going away. You're going to have to live with us because there's more of us than you. So, when are you going to act and reduce that price? It can be done tonight in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Ms. Farhat.
Hi there. My name is Julie Farhat, and I live at 1930 LaRome Drive. I am the founder and executive director of the 14th Annual Mom Race for Mental Health Awareness and Suicide Prevention. That's taking place here in Royal Oak on Saturday, May 4. My siblings and I started the nonprofit organization Mind Over Matter, lovingly referred to as MOM after losing our mom to schizophrenia and suicide in 2005. This was our way of moving forward and turning our pain into purpose. The MOM Race is a family-friendly 5K run-walk for all ages and fitness levels that starts at 10:00 a.m. from Star JC Park, right across the street from where my family lived for 20-years. The event brings families, friends, advocates, and an entire community together for a morning of hope, health, and healing. This is your chance to do something proactive to help erase the stigma surrounding mental illness. Remember a loved one lost to suicide, or honor your mom for Mother's Day. Advanced online registration is required for the MOM Race by next Tuesday, April 30. Last Chance registration rates are $30 for ages 18 and under and $35 for adults over 18. Your MOM Race registration includes a premium cotton-poly t-shirt, custom racing bib, silicone mom wristband, official 5K finisher time using D-Tag technology, refreshments, live music, and a ticket into our post-race raffle featuring more than $3,000 worth of gifts from local businesses. We'll also have face painting for the kids, free mini-massages, counselors on hand, and a living mom memorial where you can add photos of your loved ones, too. Thank you to the 1,150 people who have already registered for the 2019 MOM Race and the record-setting 46 businesses that sponsored this year's event. Also, a big thanks to the city of Royal Oak and all the residents along the race path for your continued cooperation in allowing us to continue our annual tradition here in Royal Oak. To date, the MOM Race has raised $350,000 for local brain research, suicide prevention programming, and crisis intervention services. Proceeds from the upcoming MOM Race will further programs and initiatives at the University of Michigan Depression Center. No resolve in common ground. All donations made to Mind Over Matter are tax-exempt under IRS 501(c)(3). For more information on the MOM Race and to register, please visit momrace.org. I'm also going to leave some postcard flyers here in the back for anyone who might be interested. Here's to another great MOM Race, and hopefully, fingers crossed, a beautiful day just like today, and also that this baby stays put for another two weeks. So, so much.
Thank you, Ms. Farhat. Ms. Hennessy.
Carol Hennessy, 258 East 12 My Road, Royal Oak. This is just a reminder that the Royal Oak Memorial Society will be cleaning veterans' graves on Saturday, May the 4th. Everyone is invited to help us. Please bring tools to help clean around the headstones. We hope to see you there, and if you need more information, please call 248-543-8420. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy. Yes, sir. Here in the end.
Stephen Miller, 115 Georgetown Square. Late last fall, I experienced a home fire where I lost nearly everything I owned. It was absolutely devastating. The most precious items I lost were dozens of pictures and mementos of my best little buddy, my 10-year-old nephew, who had tragically died of cancer just a few years prior. I will never be able to retrieve any of those memories, and that just crushed me. During the fire, I was overwhelmed by the selfless actions taken by the 16 firefighters and officials who tried to save my structure. Several helped me push a stored vehicle out of my attached garage, and yet others saved file drawers filled with important papers before everything else was lost. In December, after the fire, I paid for a large ad in a local newspaper naming, thanking each firefighter and official who came to my aid, and I even added a little PSA to the Royal Oak homeowners who have real fireplaces in their homes. Early last fall, I was asked to review the financial implications of public safety millage. It became clear to me that this mayor and commission majority, these politicians, had concocted a scheme to mislead Royal Oak voters into approving the public safety millage tax increase. These politicians fabricated a bait-and-switch designated to trick the voters, resulting in pre-public safety millage funding levels for the police and fire being cut and redirected for non-public safety and political purposes. These politicians sold this scheme to the voters as a $10 million yearly tax increase that would be used to fund the police, fire, and emergency medical services only. Unfortunately for the voters, this city's politicians were not truthful and did not keep their word. Since securing the additional tax money, only 17 police positions were added, zero firefighters or ambulance positions were added. Firefighters and ambulance staffing levels have shrunk to 56 positions and have stayed that low for the last several years. No firefighters or ambulance staff have been added since the tax increase has been approved by the voters. Incredibly, these same politicians approved 48 bureaucratic and administrative positions that have nothing to do with public safety. The voters' intentions were ignored by this city's politicians. Voter abuse is not limited to the hiring of bureaucrats. These politicians also misused these additional tax monies, giving nearly $6 million to one private developer, gifted millions of dollars' worth of city land to private developers, and wasted millions of taxpayer dollars on numerous overpriced, no-bid contracts awarded to politician friends and political contributors. The public safety millage specifically mandates that nearly $10 million raised each year is to be used for our public safety. Instead, because of the bait-and-switch, millions of dollars have been squandered on non-public safety items. Making matters worse, Royal Oak taxpayers who voted twice to support the public safety millage also face the threat of the closing of a fire station. All three fire stations must be maintained and fully staffed. That's what the voters clearly intended, and that's what this city's politicians are clearly being so dishonest about. It's painfully clear that these politicians are not being honest or transparent. Mayor Fournier, Commissioners Dubuck, Perusch, and Douglas are the politicians that have brought the worst of partisan and divisive political decision-making to our small city. When voters merely ask for honest and truthfulness from these elected officials, they are mostly belittled and ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, who's next? Is that Ms. Harrison I see back there?
Laura Harrison, 2729 Trafford Road. Before I speak about the two things that I want to talk about, I have to send out a hoorah to the nurses at William Beaumont Hospital. I spent too many days in there last month. They were the most wonderful people in the world, and they took, excuse me, damn-good care of me. So, and I'm fine, and Bill is very happy, too, because he gets his laundry done now. Go on any stairs. Anyhow, I can, oh, the one other thing I want to say is that I actually got a thank-you note from the nurses on the eighth floor for being a good patient. I was one scared patient. Anyhow, let me talk about what I want to talk about tonight. I may go over slightly. Number one, on the agenda under the consent, number F. Proclamation designating May 2nd, 2019, Day of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust. I am requesting that that item be removed from the consent agenda and the proclamation be read. We cannot forget these horrible things that happened. And I'm a military, I'm from a military family, and these things really shake me up. And there are people out there that want to say that it didn't happen. The hell it didn't. And if you don't believe it, go watch Schindler's List or The Diary of Anne Frank, and you will understand what I'm talking about. The other thing I want to talk about is number 13, but I'm not going to say a lot. I really feel that a business, a family business, that started over 65 years ago should be granted a waiver on this handicap parking because of the location where the business is. It is in a small, crowded area of Royal Oak, right off of Woodward. They have never had any accidents I've known of, and three generations of the Harrisons have eaten there. They have good, quality, American food, nothing fancy, but doggone, it is good. I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. I see Mr. Harrison up here.
Ladies first.
Bill, if you have time for a beer, I can show you how to use a washing machine. Help Laura out.
It is definitely above my domestic capabilities.
I'm not sure what I do. I just push buttons.
Anyway, we're going to subject you a double dose of Harrison tonight. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. And I, too, would ask that you remove the Holocaust proclamation from the consent agenda and that it be read aloud. It's not even as long as the bicycle proclamation, not that I'm complaining about the bicycle I won't speculate on why it was hidden in the agenda as opposed to being read at the beginning like all three of the other proclamations. But again, it should be read aloud for the reasons that Laura mentioned, that we should never forget this. It's particularly important to me. As a teenager, I worked at Tom's Market, and it was 10 or 12 years after the end of the war. And Mike was a survivor. And I still can see the tears in his eyes and showing me the tattoo on his arm. I wanted to know more, but I knew it would be too painful for him, even now I get choked up talking about it. Anyway, the handicap parking at the Beef Carver Restaurant, I think it would be a tremendous hardship on people to walk from the regular parking lot that's on a hill. Any of you that are familiar with that parking lot will understand that. And it's no different. The parking arrangement at the Beef Carver is no different than at the Chicken Shack. The Chicken Shack has parking on the side, and it has parking in the front. And one of the reasons I've heard about wanting to redo the Carver parking is that the street is being redone. Well, they just redid the street at the Chicken Shack as well. Interestingly enough, the Chicken Shack has been there only one year longer than the Beef Carver. The Chicken Shack was 1956, and the Carver came around in 1957. So I got 27 seconds left, and under the consent agenda, you're going to file the Franco-activity report. I guess my question is, what have they done? What we need is some publications to change the perception that there is not enough parking downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Who's next? In the back? I see a hand. Can't see a face, but I can see a hand.
My eyeballs this time. First of all, I would like to commend you for recommending a proclamation for the nurses. I got to meet quite a lot of them a couple of years ago when I spent two weeks in ICU trying very hard to die of sepsis, and they gave me excellent care. So I'm not sure if I'd be here without them because they only gave me 2% chance of making it. So thank you for giving a proclamation for them. What I have here this evening is a recommendation and request from you to support Senate Bill 54 and House Bill 4100. This is the historic tax credit is back. I don't know if you remember, it used to provide 25% for repairs for people, or homes and for businesses that were historically designated, but it was removed in 2011 because of the economy hitting the skids. It is back up now for vote, and Representative Allison back here has indicated he plans on supporting it. There are quite a number of communities that have put a proclamation that they support this. I highly recommend that you do as well. I will leave this with Melanie. It's something that sooner is better than later, but I really recommend it because it's an excellent thing. I also quickly would like to mention that the Beef Carver issue, you need to approve that. One size does not fit all, and this isn't one of those items where one size does not fit all. That parking lot slopes downhill fairly drastically, especially if you happen to get more and more gray hair, and it's in the middle of winter. It's kind of hairy. Pushing the handicap parking back up there is going to cause more people to fall down. And being as there's never been an accident over there, everybody's pretty used to it, I highly recommend that you give them that license. This is one of the favorite places for seniors to eat. I delivered mail there in '75 and looked horribly out of place at the time. Now I fit in just fine. While you're discussing senior-worthy items, this is definitely one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, Mr. Wolf.
333 North Troy Street. Perhaps it's because I am a Jew that I stand up for the people at Royal Oak Manor, because I learned my history, and one of the first people Hitler went after were the handicapped kids, the retard, they called them retarded in those days. And they went after the elderly and people that they felt weren't contributing to society. This is just a small portion of the people in Royal Oak. Tonight, Ms. Macy gave a nice speech on Earth Day and mentioned that one of our duties is towards the poor. I can assure you, those that live in Royal Oak Manor are not among the wealthy, and that their cars, again, I repeat, are their last vestige of independence and ability to get to Beaumont Hospital and their wonderful doctors and nurses. Otherwise, they have to call an ambulance, and those ambulances love to charge you. I recently had to go to the hospital, and I got a $450 bill from the fire, $513 bill, excuse me, from the fire department. And may I add, my car broke down, $450 for a radiator. Well, seniors don't have a lot of money, and we have to watch our Ps and Qs. So I'm asking that people like Ms. Macy and other commissioners that see fit try to put this on the agenda tonight. It would only be for a short while, maybe two years, less than two years, and all they're asking is $25 a month. Give them a break. The other thing I want to mention is, I just happened to pick up the Metro Times today. Life is for the rest of us. Pot is legal now. Why not give it a try? How to smoke, vape, dab, and otherwise get super-duper high. Pot is legal now. Why not give it a try? The do's and don'ts of dope. Get the low down before you fire up. And going green, Republicans turn over a new leaf. Yes, billions of dollars are in marijuana. But why can't our police chief speak to the real facts about marijuana in Royal Oak and how it's going to make it almost impossible for the few people in his department to do their job if people are both drinking and trying to get high on dope just because the city can make money? Are we going to flood the emergency rooms? So many things are much more important than making money. We need to think of your kids. Do you want them to go to good schools? Do you want them to smoke dope? Those are the two choices you have. Okay? Now, as far as the parking goes, handicap parking, again, you have to get real here. We have a tsunami of elderly people, and also, I myself am now eating more Einstein bagel in Berkeley and Woodward. Why? Because they have free parking. I don't have to put up with the parking meter nonsense in Royal Oak. A long time ago, there was a guy on TV that used to say, "The rent is too damn high." Well, the meters are too damn much. I'm telling you, people are not coming to Royal Oak because of the meters. And I also want to mention Noah and Fraus. They were part of the reason you guys got the Oakland County grant, the million-dollar grant. Please give them a break. They have wonderful grant writers, and I'm still pushing for them, only for the reason they were instrumental. They were behind the park at Birmingham, Shane Park. They did that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
All right, thank you.
All right, who's next? Eric.
Alex. Good evening. I'm Alex Williams from Mitcham Chapel Amy Church, 4207 West 14 Mile. Just wanted to give a heads up again. We're in our closing weeks of our Spread the Love campaign for peanut butter and jelly. So if you haven't yet, or if you just want to give some more, please do. We have donation boxes at the three firehouses and downstairs at City Hall. So thank you. We have until May 5th, so this is one of the last times I'll be up here to talk to you about peanut butter and jelly this year. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And coming up has helped. I was fortunate enough to witness your pantry downstairs, and that's a lot of peanut butter and a lot of jelly. That's really unbelievable. Nice work. Yes, sir.
Charles Pelzer, President, sign of the Beef Carver, 27400 Woodward. Thank you to my customers. I'm asking the commission to approve this license agreement. Beef Carver did open in 1957. We grew to 14 stores. We're down to one store. So we started in Royal Oak. We're going to end in Royal Oak, hopefully not in the near future. Like they said, our clientele, I've been with the company for 47 years, and 25 of those, I've been in the executive position where I've worked all the stores, the office, the Royal Oak store. And to my memory, I don't recall ever having a situation with an accident or anything else on that parking area. If you've been in a Beef Carver, it is elderly. A lot of handicapped, a lot of wheelchairs, a lot of walkers. They call it, you know, we try to get the families in there. We're trying to build our business that way, but if you come in in the afternoon, the majority of the people are elderly. Those four spots are utilized.
Charles Pelzer, President, Sign of the Beef Carver, 27400 Woodward. Thank you to my customers. I'm asking the commission to approve this license agreement. Beef Carver did open in 1957. We grew to 14 stores. We're down to one store. So we started in Royal Oak, we're going to end in Royal Oak. Hopefully not in the near future. Like they said, our clientele, I've been with the company for 47 years. And 25 of those, I've been in the executive position where I've worked all the stores, the office, the Royal Oak store. And to my memory, I don't recall ever having a situation with an accident or anything else on that parking area. If you've been in a Beef Carver, it is elderly. A lot of handicapped, a lot of wheelchairs, a lot of walkers. They call it, you know, we try to get the families in there. We're trying to build our business that way. But if you come in in the afternoon, the majority of the people are elderly. Those four spots are utilized. When I met with Holly back in the summer, she advised me that there was no agreement. Now, I find that hard to believe, but 50 years ago, who knows? I've gone through all the paperwork, I've gone through plans. The parking was there, but there's no formal agreement. So I'm asking for that agreement. It mentions in there sightlines for pedestrians. I watched it, I walked it. There's no issue with sightlines. I don't see where anybody can be blocked if you're walking down Woodward and even Cambridge. I did email last Friday all the commissioners and you, Mr. Mayor, testimonials. A lot of customers, once they heard about this, wrote testimonials. I was surprised at how many we got. I've even gotten a few since then that weren't in the packet. Again, asking to keep the handicap parking. It even hit the senior alert on Facebook. Excuse me. So again, we're willing to do whatever we need to do, be it, you know, we're now working on redoing the parking lot in the back. If you want another spot, if you want a banned handicap spot, we'll be more than happy to put one there. But as far as that, those four spots on the side, they're right by the door. They get utilized all the time. You know, I'd hate to have people, instead of walking 30 feet from their car, walking 300 feet. Okay? They made mention of the slope. The slope's not as extreme as made out to be, but there is a slope there. And we have had people roll down the hill, so to speak. So again, I ask you that you do approve this. I will stick around. I don't know if I'm able to answer any questions once it comes up on the agenda, but I will be here to find out. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Pelzer.
Janice Wagman, 600 Wellesley. Why am I so concerned the commission doesn't consider seniors and the handicapped when making parking decisions? And why did I characterize it as an assault on handicapped and senior parking? History and observation. The DDA has zero on-street handicap parking. Zero. Farmer's Market had zero when all this construct, wherever it is, when all the construction started until we called. Then two spaces were added, and then two more spaces were added with paint only. And then finally, two sawhorses were put up with handicap signs. Now we are being told that we should be walking over to the parking structure, there'll be lots of handicapped over there. That just because you're making a smaller parking lot does not mean fewer seniors want to go to the market. Main, north of 11 Mile, I'm told that no handicap street parking was put on because you didn't touch those spaces and you don't have the money. But you've got money for bike lanes. Royal Oak Manor, there's an 80% increase in rates for low-income seniors and no senior discount is even considered. Even the airport gives senior discounts for parking. The post office, it was defended on Facebook that there's no on-street parking there, no on-street handicap parking there. Both Birmingham and Ann Arbor have on-street parking. Handicap parking. Changing the convenient on-street parking to structures, to structures, it's not convenient for seniors and those with handicapped if they aren't able to. And now the Beef Carver. The Beef Carver is very special to me, just like the Farmer's Market. I went there, I'm one of three, we've had three generations in our family that have gone there. The last, my mom, when she had a stroke, we went there. When she was going through chemo, we went there with her walker. It was very difficult for her and we were always grateful to get one of those spots by the door. I think it made the difference whether we were able to go or not. The last meeting, the staff recommendations, reading that, and comments by one commissioner led me to believe that the decision would not be in favor of the Beef Carver. I hope that's not true. Despite the fact that there's been zero incidents there, I think it should be. Not despite, but anyways. I urge you to vote in favor of licensing these spaces. Do not consider the spaces in front as they belong to the county. Allow the owner to install a handicap space in the rear, van space. And if you're concerned about setting a precedent, the precedent should be allowing this to be grandfathered in over decades without an incident. And I hope the city commission will continue to consider handicap parking. Thank you.
Who's next?
Good evening, all. My name is Linda Tumala. I live at 3021 Helen Court. I'm speaking also to the issue of the handicap situation at the Sign of the Beef Carver. If you have never had to use a walker, you are fortunate. In 10 or 20 years, that may change even for many of you. Only someone who has or does fit in this situation knows how limiting it can be. Knowing someone who uses one is not the same as being in the situation yourself, as much as you may have to help them. Yes, I had to use one in the past. Fortunately, only for one week. Getting in and around places that took no effort before took planning and a huge amount of energy during that week. It limited where we went to shop or dine. And I was about 10 years younger than I am now. You may not look at the Beef Carver as an exciting dining-out place, but to many seniors, it is a place that has what they are looking for, both in menu and convenient access. More importantly, they could park close to the front door with the provided handicap spaces. To eliminate these spaces for many seniors with or without walkers will hinder their ability to dine at one of the favorite places and one that is still like a family restaurant. This also applies to others, not just seniors, those with Parkinson's or MS also need handicap spaces. These spaces have been there for many years, as you've heard earlier tonight. It was stated at another meeting that there have not been any undue amount of traffic issues with the present configuration. Many variances are given around the city for developments. Here is a stable business that needs these spaces in their present location. To require them to make them ADA compliant is understandable. The spaces would still be available for the many customers who need close access. I am asking you to allow the Beef Carver to continue to have the handicap parking at its present location. The city has stated that it wants to be supportive of the seniors in Royal Oak. Here is your opportunity to back that up. Thank you.
All right, who's next? I see a hand back there, is that Representative Ellison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not representing Representative Ellison tonight, I'm representing Jim Ellison, former mayor of this community. My address is 1309 Mohawk, Royal Oak. I sat here tonight, excuse me, and I listened to some statements made regarding the public safety millage that was enacted under my, when I was sitting in that seat. And there were some revisionist history stated about that. I'd like to try to clear the history up as best I could. When we instituted the millage, it was never the intent of the millage, and Mr. Johnson, feel free to jump in if I'm remembering this thing correctly. It was never the intention of the public safety millage to totally fund police and fire operations. It was the intent of the millage to provide the extra manpower and extra equipment that our police chief and our fire chief said we needed to control to maintain the city services. Up until that point, all the funding was coming out of the general fund. So we said, we designed, after meeting with the chiefs, with the bargaining units, we designed the future of the Royal Oak Public Safety to be 76 sworn police officers and 55 firefighters. Are those numbers correct, Mr. Johnson? 79, excuse me, 79 police officers and 55 firefighters. If I'm not mistaken, we are still holding true to those numbers, if not greater. Okay? But it was never the intent of the millage to cover all the costs in the police department or the fire department. The general fund, if I'm not mistaken, still provides the majority of the money to provide those services. What the millage did was allow to add staff up to the safety levels that were being recommended by our chiefs and then still relieve some of the money in the general fund so that some of the other positions that were lost in DPS or clerical staff at City Hall, so those positions could be backfilled because we had gone through an attrition where none of those positions could be maintained because we were trying to maintain the police and fire as the priority. The millage election and support of the voters allowed us to do that. As far as the millage being offered a year before its expiration date, my recollection of that is it was to provide the city the opportunity, if the voters did not support the millage again, to come up with an alternate plan to fund the public safety department. Because if the millage had not passed, they may have gone for it again, but if it had not passed on the second time, then we'd be short all that money and the city would be back in financial crisis. So that was the basic intent of offering the millage early. It was not to skim any money off of it. There's been no money taken from the public safety fund. Any money that's used for new positions has come from the general fund, which is what the general fund's supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close public comment. If you're here to speak at the hearing tonight, you can come back up again and speak at the hearing, but right now, public comment is closed for everything other than item number 12, our scheduled public hearing. All right, that brings us to item number 10, which is the approval of the agenda. I would ask whoever moves forward with the motion that we add an element for the May 15, or add an agenda item for the May 15 budget meeting, perhaps a slight time shift discussion. Commissioner DeBuck?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of a revisitation of our budget meetings because I've had a conflict arise to.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner DeBuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion? Commissioner Levaser?
I would move that we amend this to add a discussion on the Royal Commander parking.
Okay, we have an amendment proposed by Commissioner Levaser to amend the agenda to add a discussion on Royal Oak Manor parking. Is there a second on that amendment? A second on that amendment by Commissioner Gibbs. Is there a discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the amendment fails. All right, this brings us back to the original motion. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have an agenda. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I move that we pull item F off the consent agenda and add it as, before item 12.
Okay, all right. Well, yeah, you just pull it off, there's no motion necessary.
And otherwise approve the consent agenda.
Okay, you're making a motion to otherwise approve the consent agenda.
Consent agenda with the exception of...
Does anyone want to pull anything else off the consent agenda before we do that? No, okay. Make your motion then.
That we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F to be pulled off the agenda and read separately.
Okay. Support, okay. All right, discussion? All right, the consent agenda now consists of claims of April 12th and 23rd, 2019, approval of Berkeley School District Tax Collection Agreement to levy summer 2019 taxes on Royal Oak properties, Finance Department requests to fill vacancy, Department of Public Services requests to fill vacancy, request to set public hearing for removal of Dutch Elm Disease trees removal, award to professional engineering services surveying 2020 projects, exercise contract options B, 1601 city buildings, heating, ventilation, air conditioning maintenance, approval of sidewalk cafe application, Kandado tacos, approval of sidewalk cafe application, sake sushi, commission of the arts, application for public art, and receive and file the non-action items, which consist of the March 2019 Franco Activity Report, 2019 first-quarter training evaluations forms, fiscal year 2019-20, 2023-24 adopted capital improvement plan and the electrical transformers located on southeast library report. Without any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to item number F, formally on the consent agenda. Mayor Pro temp Douglas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the Harrisons for bringing this up. I will explain that the reason the city commission does some proclamations at the beginning of the agenda is because there are organizations that have come to us and asked us to put it on the agenda and they have people in the audience who we wish to acknowledge. But that by no means that the proclamation about the day of remembrance has any less importance. And I think even more so these days, it astonishes and dismays me that there are people in America who deny the Holocaust. It's frightening. And it's also frightening that there are trends in our society of people who are speaking of groups in the same way that the Nazis spoke about the Jews and the disabled and many other people that they targeted. So yes, by all means, I think we should call this out. Mayor, I'd be happy to read it. If you would like to take privilege and read it, that would be fine, too.
Commissioner Douglas, I think it would be great if you read this proclamation.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry. So whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systemic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, 6 million were murdered. Roma, Gypsies, people with disabilities, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons, and millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political descendants also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas we, the people of the city of Royal Oak, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas the day of, whereas we, the people of the city of Royal Oak, should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas the day of remembrance has been set aside for the people of the city of Royal Oak to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for respect for all peoples. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, Public Law 96388, October 7, 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the day of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust known as Yom Hashoah, Thursday, May 2, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Fournier and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission proclaim May 2, 2019, the day of remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators. And further proclaim that we, as citizens of the city of Royal Oak, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs.
Thank you, Mayor Pro temp Douglas. I'd just like to echo the remarks of Mayor Pro temp Douglas. And I'd also like to just underscore that, you know, these proclamations are important and, you know, this is an important one. So I'm glad we had the opportunity to read it, pull it off the agenda, and, you know, make sure that all of our neighbors, survivors, for those that are still with us, we're blessed to have with us today, as well as, you know, the families of the victims and survivors, this is important. So. victims and survivors, this is important. So, thank you. All right. Commissioner Dubac?
This still requires approval? For approval of the resolution?
Approval.
All right, any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. All right. This brings us to item number twelve on the agenda. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission license establishment public hearing, Brown Iron Royal Oak LLC, thirty-nine five five Woodward Avenue, Suite five-ten. Request a plan of new operation, request a new plan of operation. Chief?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, we do have a request from Brown Iron Royal Oak LLC for approval of a new plan of operation to be located at three zero nine five five Woodward, Suite five-ten. This is in the new Woodward Crossing development. The Class C license is currently in escrow, and it's being purchased from Farmington Village Complex LLC, which was located in Farmington, Michigan. The applicants will be doing business as Brown Iron Brew House. Brown Iron Brew House is LLC, or Brown Iron Royal Oak LLC is equally owned by Timothy Ensenbrough, Patricia Ensenbrough, and Denny Spiljenovski. Hopefully I got that, didn't terror, brutalized that name there, sorry. The applicants are purchasing the liquor license for seventy-five thousand dollars and will spend approximately one point one million on construction and build-out, including new furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Brown Iron Brew House will lease the building from William Beaumont Hospital for twenty-five thousand per month. Funding for this project would derive from the personal savings of the applicant and supported by a line of credit from Huntington National Bank. Mr. Ensenbrough is a real estate appraiser with Cushman in Wakefield and Southfield, Michigan. He's been licensed by the MLCC since two thousand fourteen and currently operates Brown Iron Brewery in Washington Township with his wife Patricia. Mr. Spiljenovski has been actively involved in the restaurant business for the last thirty years, including managing Lazy Bones Smokehouse in Roseville. He is licensed by the MLCC since two thousand fourteen and cooperates Brown Iron Brewery with the Ensenbroughs. An MLCC check revealed that the Washington Township location has not had a single violation from the MLCC. We contacted Sergeant Dumas from the Macomb County Sheriff's Department. They characterize the establishment as well-run with responsible operators. The applicants have employed Wendy Polowski as a general manager for the Brown Iron Brew House location in Royal Oak. Ms. Polowski has been the restaurant manager, has been in the restaurant management business since two thousand twenty oh eight and currently manages the Washington Township location. If approved, they'll operate a full-service restaurant and bar. The format will be American Contemporary Grill, featuring starters, sandwiches, burgers, salads, and a full brew house dinners. They'll also feature lunch and kids menu. The proposed hours of operation are Sunday from ten a.m. to ten p.m., Monday through Thursday, eleven a.m. to eleven p.m., and Friday, eleven a.m. to midnight, Saturday, ten a.m. to midnight. Kitchen will be open until closing each night, with last service of alcohol will be twenty minutes prior to closing. The applicants anticipate the food alcohol ratio to be sixty percent food, forty percent alcohol. They'll have approximately six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight usable square feet. Interior seating will be for two hundred and one patrons with seventeen seats at the bar. The applicants also request an outdoor service area to be located on private property directly adjacent to the building with seating for about sixty patrons. Overall capacity will be set by the police department after recommendations from the building and fire departments. The applicants are not requesting either an entertainment permit or a dance permit. Our findings indicate that the applicants do meet the requirements necessary to grant this request. If approved, the applicants will still have to comply with all planning, zoning, and building requirements.
Questions for Chief O'Donoghue?
I believe the applicants are here.
Any questions for the chief? All right, the applicants like to approach. Learn a little bit more about what you're doing and...
I'm Tim Eisenbrough. It was close on the name. It's Spiljenovski, so he's the other partner.
And Scott McDonald. Good evening, mayors, mayor, commissioners, chief, and officials. It's a real treat for me to stand here and honor, really, with Mr. Eisenbrough, having known him and his wife Patricia for thirty years. In fact, Tim was my roommate at Michigan State and...
Plus one on the point.
No friends.
A quick funny story is, Tim left Michigan State after his second year to join the army for two years, came back, we were roommates before and after, and somehow we both graduated at the same time. So, I'm not sure what that means for me, but at any rate, I'm here to answer any legal questions with regard to the application, and Mr. Eisenbrough, I'm sure, will can address any operational questions.
Well, maybe how about a little bit of elevator pitch right now about the concept? I know we have people tuning in. We're excited about this development at, you know, the corners, and we're excited to hear that you're petitioning us to bring this concept here. So, how about, kind of give us a feel or flavor, if you will, of what you plan to do?
Sure. Well, my name is Eisenbrough, so in German, Eisen is iron and Brough is Brough, that's how we got the name. So, and it was our, it was our goal, I work in real estate for the last, since nineteen ninety-one, and it's, I pretty much grind on a computer all the time. And then so we came up with the idea that we really liked getting to know people living within a community, so we opened up a restaurant that was a mile and a half from our location, or from our house. And we were lucky enough to come across our partner, Denny Spiljenovski, and he lives in Royal Oak. So, it was kind of funny. I think he always wanted to, you know, where he can come down to Royal Oak instead of traveling forty-five minutes north. So, we have the commute south now. But we have a beer-centric smokehouse where we, we use a smoker for a lot of our meats, but we also offer vegetarian, we offer vegan options, gluten-free options. We focus on draft beer, American craft beer in particular, but we don't offer any major domestic brands. It's usually something, I would say our ratio is probably sixty percent Michigan. We offer some ciders, gluten-free options, non-alcoholic options as well, but there will be no brewing on the site. We do brew up in Washington Township, but we won't be brewing here. And the focus is, it's a scratch kitchen, and we get, we're kind of going through the numbers today. It's a constant stream of deliveries for us. We really rotate through a lot of food. It's very fresh. It's, but the atmosphere is really a, I call it a German, you know, kind of community seating or German beer hall to some degree. We offer community seating for most people, but we do have similar table options. At this location, we'll have up to seventy-six seats, up to seventy-six to eighty seats for private dining as well. And that'll be something that we don't offer, haven't offered before, but it's a nice option because we looked in the market and we didn't see a lot of good meeting places up there in that particular location. So, I thought it was a nice option. We can break it down into two rooms or one room, and we'll have a video conferencing. We'll have some advanced features there as well for, for people who can attend family functions.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Eisenbrough? Now, you talked about sixty percent of it being local beer. Do you plan on sourcing anything even more local? We pride ourselves in having a few breweries here in Royal Oak.
Yeah, we think, we think it's the more the merrier to some degree. I think that the reason why we originally going to do our own brewery there called Brown Iron Brewery, we do, and we decided to change that concept to a brew house because we didn't want it to be so proprietary. We, we make the best beer. We think that's kind of silly because I think there's a lot of fantastic people that do great things, and we want to be part of that. We are actually, because we only focus on draft beer, like we do no bottles, so it helps in the storage, helps on returnables, and, but you'll find that we're actually, for many of our accounts, we're actually in the top tier for, we've, you know, of sales. And we've also been named Best Craft Beer Bar by craftbeer.com for the last four years as well. So, that's a nationwide look into things, and we've been featured in USA Today, and we're always, we try to be in the mix of one of the best places to be.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Eisenbrough, we'll, if you want to take a seat for a minute, we'll open up the public comment, or I'm sorry, open up the public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak tonight on this public hearing or at this public hearing? Going once, going twice. All right, public hearing was opened and closed. All right, we can bring the discussion back up here. Commissioner Perusch?
I'll move approval of this application.
Motion by Commissioner Perusch, second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion. Commissioner Perusch?
This is a wonderful concept. I think it's a wonderful location, and I think it was music to my ears and to a number of other people's ears in the community who will now realize, which I hadn't realized before, that you will actually have some potential meeting spaces within the facility itself. With the schools closing, which means there are basement meeting rooms that are going to be gone, a lot of kids' baseball teams and soccer teams and people who want to have bridal showers and so on are losing meeting spaces within that facility. So, the fact that this one is going to potentially have some meeting rooms for small groups like that, I think is terrific, and it's in a perfect location because it's accessible, it's got a lot of parking, and people all know where Beaumont is. So, I think it's a great concept and wish you a lot of luck.
Commissioner Dubac?
I would say it's really exciting to see the Woodward Crossings development starting to populate with really exciting tenants. I think it's a great, a great concept and great addition to the city, so wish you great success.
Commissioner Gibbs?
As the only commissioner who lives on the west side of the city, I have to say I'm very excited for this. Some would say I am walking distance, others may say I'm stumbling distance, but...
Not on which way you're going.
Well, yeah, I'm walking one way, stumbling the other way, right? But no, I'm really looking forward to having a great restaurant, a great brewery, right next door to my house, very close. So, thank you for bringing it here.
Anybody else? Yeah, we're just excited that, I mean, a great concept, you got a great spot there. You know, that part of town is, you know, with Beaumont's development there is really starting to, you know, revitalize itself, and I know all the neighbors in that area are very eager for you and the other number of businesses to move into that corridor. So, I'm excited to try it. I don't know if I'll get through all sixty of your beers, but, you know, over a decade, I'll do my best. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Welcome to Royal Oak. All right, this brings us to item number thirteen, which is a consideration of a license agreement for twenty-seven four hundred Woodward Avenue, sign of the beef carver.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. I don't know how I can follow such a great presentation about beer. This was brought up originally at the last commission meeting, and we slightly modified our commission letter to include a detailed review of the codes and safety aspects of this particular parking area that's under consideration for the license. One of the things that I wanted to mention was this, our accident history that we did was just a three-year accident history. It's pretty standard for all traffic issues. I did not go back any farther than that, so I can't say that there's never been anything there, but in the last three years, we have not had an accident there. On the last page of your document, which is attachment two, it talks about some of the codes that have been enacted over time that are meant to provide safe use of the public right-of-way. Both our zoning ordinance, Ashtow regulations, the uniform criteria for major streets, they all are there to make sure that the roads are as safe as possible. Though these regulations aren't necessarily to look at unsafe situations. They're, they're there to make sure that we reduce the possibilities of accidents, and the things about stopping within thirty feet, or sorry, parking within thirty feet of a stop sign are there to make sure that we have less probability of accidents, just like guardrails along the freeway. They're not put up after somebody drives off a freeway. They're put up to prevent people from driving off a freeway, to make it safer for them. But by no means is this about trying to get rid of handicap parking spots for anybody. The property owner has been made aware that by law, he has to have handicap parking spaces in his parking lot. So, one of the things he'll probably have to do when he redoes his parking lot is add those parking spaces. We've also looked at the parking on Woodward, and we've included some diagrams for a couple different options that we've explored since the last commission meeting about providing those spaces on, in the parking spaces along Woodward. The city of Royal Oak has one hundred percent jurisdiction over that parking area, along with the sidewalks and any green space that happens to be out there. The MDOT does not have jurisdiction over there, and they've passed rules and regulations that say the city is responsible for those areas. So, we do have the ability to put handicap parking spaces on Woodward Avenue, just a few feet further than the ones that we're talking about potentially eliminating. So, I just wanted to add that we have explored that. We're open to that, even including it in the project to redo Cambridge Avenue. We could probably easily re-stripe those areas and add the necessary signage. We've looked at the pavements, and they're fairly level, so it's not like a problem with slopes or anything like that, which is one of the reasons why you want to have flatter areas in the ADA spaces is because of people who might be on crutches or wheelchairs or things and have the ability to, or the ability to not move very well. So...
Questions for Mr. Callahan? Commissioner Macy?
So, the handicap parking you're talking about possibly adding on the Woodward side, that would be at the city's expense, doing all that work?
Yes. I mean, one of the things that we've talked about in here is that if, if the license agreement is not approved, that we would restore the area back to what it's supposed to be, green space, and in addition to that, we could add these parking spaces out on Woodward if that's, I mean, it's certainly a lot closer to the front door than the eighty feet away in the parking lot behind the building. So, that's, we feel that's a pretty good compromise.
I'm just, have you talked to the owner about the, this potential solution?
Yes.
I'm, I assume we'll hear from him in a moment, but was he a minimalist?
It was a brief conversation, but we talked about that.
All right.
All right, Commissioner Levaser, next?
Thank you. I believe the owner, Mr. Pelzer, had indicated a plan to put some van-accessible parking in the, in the parking lot behind the building. Would that be an acceptable solution to the parking, making ADA compliant and not necessarily focusing on these four spots right here as far as making those van compliant?
I've looked at the regulations for the number of spaces he has to have, and it is three because he has more than fifty spaces. So, of the three spaces, I believe at least one has to be van-accessible, and the other two can be regular handicap parking spaces.
So, he could put those in his parking lot behind the building, and we could keep these four as is?
That's certainly one option.
Okay. Would another option be to, and I'm going under the presumption that a lot of the folks who are parking on Woodward may have mobility issues as well, even though those are not marked as handicap, they're effectively being used as handicap. You know, Mr. Pelzer can comment on that if we'll so allow, but, but I'm wondering if, if we could do both here and make those handicap on Woodward as well as having those on Cambridge available?
Anything's possible because we haven't done anything yet.
Commissioner Douglas?
So, they're required to have three ADA spaces, one of which is van-accessible.
Yes.
So, we could put the three spaces in front of the building. If the owner chose to add additional parking, knowing the nature of their clientele, he would have the ability to add some in the established parking lot, which I understand they're going to be repaving and could be re-striping anyway, and we could reduce the risk along Cambridge and reduce the use of a private business of the public right-of-way and solve all our problems. Am I oversimplifying this?
I think you made it more complicated, but that's, that's kind of what, you know, staff feels that this parking area in the right-of-way on the side of the building of Cambridge is, has issues that complicate traffic in that area, and we still are, planning and engineering are both in favor of eliminating this parking area. As far as providing the handicap spaces, he will have to provide them in his parking lot, and we can provide even more along Woodward Avenue. You know, I only gave options for four parking spaces at the most. You could make every parking space on Woodward a handicap parking space if you wanted to. It's typically not required, but four additional ones along Woodward would be replacing the four on the side of the building.
Which seems even better to me.
Commissioner Perusch?
Mr. Callan, I have a question about the slope of the parking lot that's behind the building. We forget that we have hills in Royal Oak in certain locations, and that's certainly one, where Cambridge comes down a hill and the parking lot slopes down as well. So far, I have not had to use a mobile... So far, I have not had to use a mobility device like a wheelchair or a walker, but I know of other people who have. The idea of using either one of those on that sloped parking lot is terrifying to me. And I don't know how you could put handicapped, accessible parking spaces back there in that area and still comply with what I assume are specific slope and it's got to be flat requirements in the ADA. I drove around there again this weekend, I couldn't remember any area back there that was like flat, except way, way, way back in the corner. And that's, my recollection is correct, there, it all slopes. And I, I don't know how you could put handicap parking back there that would comply with ADA regulations in terms of the grade of the, of the land.
Well, because I haven't seen a topographic survey of the site yet or any plans for the parking lot, we would try to make sure that we know exactly where those spaces are, and we try to create as flat as possible out there. We think that there's, there's always ways to regrade a parking lot. And the handicap spaces, according to the code, don't have to be as close, the closest spots to the building, they have to be on the closest pathway to get to the building. So there's probably a spot somewhere along the alley that can be leveled out enough to meet code, to, you know, to provide the flatter slopes that the ADA spots would need, you know.
But it would require a substantial, in my view, regrading of at least a portion of that lot. It would not, not just repaving and restriping, it would be significant regrading.
Well, one of our other codes requires stormwater detention and collecting the water, so some of that requires a significant amount of regrading as well in order to be able to collect the water, and this parking lot's big enough to have the code apply to it. But I, like I said, I don't know what the topographic survey looks like yet, but I'm pretty sure we can work with the builder, or whoever's building the parking lot, to come up with a flat enough space for these spaces.
Okay, that's, that's all my questions for now.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yes, a little bit about the potential license agreement. How would that work? Does it have to be revisited every so many years, or would it just last for the length of the license of the building? It doesn't transfer with transfer of the building owner, or how does that work?
Dave, maybe want to be able to talk about that. Typically, it runs as a covenant with the land, unless we specifically wrote it to be tied to the current property owner, which we've done in different license agreements, but this one is not written that way. So it stays with the land. And at some point in time, if the property owner, it's no longer a restaurant, or somebody wants to build something else there, or change where the doors are to the building, you know, there could be reason to revisit it. And it gives us like a 90-day time window to notify them that we're considering, you know, rescinding the license agreement in the future.
So it runs with the land, with the city commission, having the ability to pull it back if, because what we're talking about is a public benefit within the context of this particular business, and should that change, it would likely not be necessary anymore. So it wouldn't be the new owner, the new business, should the business model change in 20, 30 years, wouldn't be entitled to that property. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Levaser?
I'd like Mr. Pelzer to have the opportunity to interact with us and ask or answer questions for us, whether the chair wants to take the discretion to allow that.
Yeah, we will. I just want to make sure that we get all our questions out first with staff, and then, you know, the intent is to ask him some questions. Commissioner Macy?
So your proposal for the additional spaces on Woodward, that's with the assumption that then we would take back that, the four plus, four spots on the side, and those would no longer be parking, correct? Or no?
That is an option to provide nearby handicap parking spaces if the, you know, if we felt that having some as close as possible to the doorway were needed.
Okay, so...
We explored that option to just show that it can be done.
Okay. And just a question following up on something Commissioner Levaser asked. So it's, those ones that are on the Cambridge side, the ones that are an issue today, the issue isn't simply that they're not ADA compliant, it's also, if they were just regular parking spots, you would still have an issue with them, correct?
Absolutely.
Because they back out into traffic and are too close to the stop sign, is that?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Callahan? Okay, Mr. Pelzer, I'll take chair privilege here if you want to come on up. At the risk of negotiating on the public forum.
I know how it is.
So, so you heard a little bit of dialogue here, maybe, you know, very briefly, kind of give us an idea of how you feel about, you know, the license agreement, and what sort of design that would you think helped best your business and your customers?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be accommodating to my guests and make it as easy for them as possible. If it's an issue of the stop sign, I'm looking at this, we have four spots there, we're only required to have three spots, of which the two, I believe, would be van-accessible. If we blacked out the first spot, it would take us away from the stop sign. I don't know if that's an option. There's certainly plenty of room there, there's all those newspaper boxes, and then the sidewalk, and then quite a, quite a large asphalt area with that small tree also. The ones on Woodward, I wouldn't have an issue. What would worry me there is somebody wheelcharing behind their cars. Hopefully, they would go in front of the cars, onto the sidewalk. But again, you know, I've got a letter from a 91-year-old man here that wasn't in the packet, that he wanted me to read here, but I didn't because of time. But, you know, he's begging to keep the existing spots. So, you know, I hate to go back to the, you know, and knock on wood, as soon as we say it's okay, there's going to be an accident. I mean, you know...
Mr. Pelzer, I have a question for you, out of my curiosity. Are you looking with the repaving, I mean, there's a minimum required handicap accessible parking, right?
Right.
Is that number good enough for your, I mean, I hear a lot of comments tonight about how the Beef Carver is more elderly people with issues. Is the minimum enough? I mean, what is your, is the status quo enough?
Well, like you made the comment, you know, they try to park as close to the front door. So the four spots, we did a time study, most of those are filled most of the time. I do see a lot of them parking on Woodward. The problem there is between the bumpers, which are there so they don't drive into the building, you know, the walkers, they go over the bumper, or through the bumper, you know, put their walker over and then walk through. A wheelchair wouldn't be able to get through the, that area. If we did these spots on Woodward, obviously, we would put the bumpers where the cars go and leave it open where the stripes are, which would be fine, provided they take that route and not along Woodward. There's not a whole lot of room, they are backing out. I've seen people back out right onto Woodward. So, you know, I mean, I'd rather have them back out onto Cambridge than onto Woodward.
Yeah. So, so if I hear what you're saying, just to summarize quickly, the spot that is furthest, Woodward always messes me up, furthest, I guess, west, because it doesn't really go north and south, I guess, west. You said, hey, to address the stop sign issue, if you were to make the van-accessible point there, and then put the van-accessible, you know, like the slashing here, and then have three parking spots to the right, I don't even know if that's possible, would be a preference. So you have your one requirement for the van, and then you have three to meet your minimum requirements. And then whatever you need to do personally on your lot is up to you to accommodate your, your needs. And then you, as it relates to the Woodward Avenue, you don't have a strong preference either way, but you express some concerns about wheelchairs, you know, getting in and out close to Woodward. Is that, is that fair to summarize your statements, make sure I have a clear understanding?
That's perfect.
Okay. Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand Mr. Callahan. I thought he had said even if we do the license agreement, the private lot is still subject to the ADA formula.
That is correct.
All right, so the, more spaces are going in the private lot regardless? Is that accurate?
That's true.
Okay. So the spots in the right-of-way would not count toward the ADA formula?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. With regard to the spots in the right-of-way, I understand that it's an accommodation for your, for your, your customers, and I don't think it's unreasonable, as long as we can, you know, feel comfortable with the safety issue. I just want to make sure you are comfortable having to make these ADA compliant. If we're going to allow the use of the right-of-way for the use of a private business, then we want to make sure that we're getting that benefit, that they're as safe as possible. So you're comfortable investing in making sure that these spaces are all ADA compliant, including slope?
Correct.
Okay.
You're talking the ones just on the south side.
The ones in the right-of-way that we're discussing tonight, that we would enter into a license agreement, that you're comfortable making sure that according to the license agreement, that those are all going to be made ADA compliant?
Oh, certainly.
Okay.
Commissioner Perush?
I have a question also about the spaces that are on Cambridge for, I guess, Mr. Callahan. Is it possible to get an ADA, at least one ADA compliant space in the Cambridge right-of-way, maybe two? Because is it, is it deep enough?
Between the sidewalk and the street?
Yes.
Where the spaces are now?
Right.
I think there's plenty of space in order to meet the space requirements. Right now, it's the slope that's the problem on these existing spots that would require some repaving. But you can, you can get anywhere from one to three spaces.
In that right-of-way area?
In that right-of-way area, yeah.
The Cambridge right-of-way area?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
There really is no slope there.
No.
It is flat, the only thing we're lacking is the van-accessible. As far as the width of the spots and the signage, we're all ADA compliant there. The only thing we're lacking is the van-accessible spot.
Yeah.
So if we made that first one a van-accessible, and then I, we went with three other spots for a total of four, I'm over my requirement, aside from the fact that it's not on a, on a private parking lot, which is, again, putting me back on the slope and in the back of the building, which I don't think we want to do. If anything, if I needed more spots, I would put the spots on Woodward. I could put two spots in the front and keep the, the four on the side.
Commissioner Gibbs?
The spots on, along Woodward, those do or do not count against, count towards the private lot handicap parking?
They do not.
Okay.
They are over and above.
Okay. And how, I'll be honest with you, I, I just don't recall, and I've never parked along Woodward, because I don't like backing up into a main road, and I'm a fair amount younger than...
Right.
The vast majority of your customers.
Right.
But, how, how challenging or how costly would it be to make those ADA compliant, those spots along Woodward?
Well, again, that's not our lot, so even if we did put those there, we're, from my understanding, I still got to put spots in the back. That's, that was unknown to me. I thought we were somewhat compliant...
Yeah, I, I was confused by that, too.
With where they're at. This is a new...
So we're, maybe one point of clarification, so even if he's licensing this right-of-way as part of his overall parking schematic, he still had, he's still required in his lot when he repaves it to add additional handicap parking?
That is the law, yes. And I don't believe there's a way to get a variance from that law to not provide those spaces, but I don't know, I'm not...
Yeah, I, I read it through, I didn't, I didn't really get that. I, I thought we were over, over spots because we had four as opposed to three, which is the requirement.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
No, and that's, I think that's a good thing from what we've heard, given that your clientele has, is a senior population, whether you have an overabundance of folks with mobility impairments, so if we allow for you to have these spaces on the south side, but then you're also going to be required to meet your ADA formula on the private lot.
Correct.
And then, if you even wanted to go further and request from the city that we install the spots on Woodward, you know, but I think between the south side and your lot, you'll be pretty well-covered, but if there is a need, I think that's something to leave on the table. Are we on the same page on that?
Yeah. I think you would make my customers happy by allowing the south side, the existing spots, adding spots on Woodward, which we don't have a problem with, and, you know, hell, I'll even put spots, you know, re-stripe, when we re-stripe the back, I'll put spots there, but they're going to be on a slope.
Well, it sounds like by law, though, you're going to have to find a way to make those ADA compliant in concert with our engineering staff, so you still have your runoff code being met as well.
You know, it's like a catch-22. I've been trying to get the alleyway done, but every time, you know, my paving company tries to do something, you know, now the city requires engineered drawings. I was going to do that last year and put concrete in there.
Got you. Well, I mean, the issue in front of us, as far as I'm concerned right now, is whether or not we're interested in a license agreement for those spots as long as they're ADA compliant. Is that accurate? That's the issue before us right now, the issue of those spots. All right.
We actually, you know, more food for thought, we just bought the building next door.
Okay.
The vet building. So, you know, I mean, we're going to actually move our offices in there, but they have parking on the side. I mean, I could make those handicap, and, you know, but again, I don't believe, that I believe is also not our private lot.
Right.
A private lot to make that, I mean, we're talking, that's going to put us out of business.
Well, that's, I mean, that's not the...
There's no way I could cut into that parking lot to make it level and make it ADA compliant.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a matter of law that's not the issue before us.
Right, I understand.
But I, I think you'll have to talk to our engineers about, about how to figure that situation out, because no matter what we do, we could do the Woodward spots, we could do the Cambridge spots, but your, your private lot's still subject to the ADA, so that's another issue.
If, if there's an ADA official and he came and he saw eight spots, I think he would be happy.
Understood.
As opposed to having the spots in the back.
Sure. Let me keep things, I'm going to move for approval of a license agreement for the spots on Cambridge.
A motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? I guess I'll go with Commissioner, what the motion makers are going to do, I'll go with Commissioner Perush, she had the firsthand.
Can I just have a clarification as to how many spaces you're recommending go in on Cambridge?
I think if the building owner is amenable, and he says he has, to putting a bit more of a gap here, so if we lose one space on the west side, to put a little more space between the stop sign, which I think is the primary safety concern, which still allows for three accessible spaces to exist, those are standard, though, they're, they're not a van-accessible space, but as we've discussed, you're going to have to figure out a way to get the other spaces in, in your private lot.
Sure.
Okay. Might as well use that space wisely.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's what I'm recommending.
Oh, okay. The other thing that I was going to ask about is, I'm sure we don't have any traffic counts or anything on Cambridge, but having lived along Woodward Avenue for almost 40 years now, and know the traffic patterns intimately, because I'm up and down that road all the time, Cambridge Road doesn't carry a whole lot of traffic, so the, the fact that you're dealing with a stop sign and traffic only going in one direction that you're intersecting with is not a concern to me as much as it would be in a different location. So I think that the compromise that we're suggesting here, moving it back further away from the stop sign, is going to work really effectively. Also, because Cambridge is not that far north of 11 Mile, the traffic is not warped up to top speed at that point, like they are by the time they hit 12 Mile. So even the traffic that is going to be going north on Woodward is going to be less of an issue with traffic approaching from Cambridge as it would be in another area of Woodward Avenue. The last thing I want to mention is that I thought about Chicken Shack, too, because I know that they park along the side, but I drove by there today, and their sidewalk is actually very, very close to the curb, so where their employees, and they had a couple of trucks there today, park is actually on their property. Their lot line goes to the sidewalk, and the sidewalk is almost by the curb. So they're not really parking in public right-of-way, they're actually parking on their parking lot, which is next to the building. So their situation is very similar, at least it looks similar, but in terms of private property versus public property, it's a little bit different. So anyway, I'm in support of the motion.
Commissioner Douglas?
So, here, you know, nothing has ever happened here...
So, here, you know, nothing has ever happened here, but, I mean, we as, as commissioners have to think about sort of the city's liability issues. So here's my question. We sign a lease agreement with, a license, rather, to use this public right of way by the restaurant. Somebody gets hurt. And, and the license agreement says that the restaurant is, you know, solely responsible for any liabilities that may happen. They have to protect us. Does that, Mr. Gillum, mean that people wouldn't sue us?
No, no, I mean, I wish you could say that people wouldn't sue us. But no, no, that means that we would be sued, and then per the license agreement, per contract, then the licensee would have the obligation to defend the city. And if they didn't want to assume that responsibility voluntarily, then we would have to sue them to enforce our agreement with them, for them to assume the responsibility.
Yeah, I mean, that just kind of gives me a little heartburn, you know, from a legal point of view. I'll also point out that on Main Street, at Main Street and across the street from Holiday Market, we had a similar issue here, where we had a business that had been using the public right of way for many years, just because they could. And in that case, the city said, no, it's, it belongs to the people, and we need to take that space back, in this case, to build Bio Swales. I mean, I see that this business is, I mean, happy to add the, the three or more handicapper's accessible spaces on the Woodward side of the building, which is even better. I mean, Mr. Pelzer spoke of people going behind the cars, but at least if they're going behind the cars in the Woodward parking area, they're still in the parking area, whereas if they're going behind the cars here on Cambridge, they're very close to the street and other traffic. The, the ability for him to have three or more spaces in front, and then, of course, the requirement that he have three spaces in the back, or has the ability to put more, depending on what he judges his clientele's needs to be, seems to me to solve the problem, serve people very ably, and reduce the city's risk.
Commissioner Levasseur.
I, I just wanted to address the liability issues. My, my reading of the license agreement is it's both an indemnification clause, so it's a provision that records insurance. And I presume that that insurance would, would help give us confidence that the licensee is financially, financially responsible. And there will be some funds to protect us if, if that were ever to come, come to, to fruition.
That's correct. That's why the, the insurance is required, yes.
Any other comments?
You know, my, my review of this situation, I know there's a discussion about safety and what have you. The, the bigger safety issue, as, as I see it, is, is requiring people who have mobility issues to walk a much greater distance to get to the restaurant here. I mean, I, I have relatives who are, you know, they're in their 80s now, their, their mobility just isn't what it used to be. I can't imagine them making it from the, the parking lot to the front of the restaurant. If, if that was the choice, they just wouldn't go. But, but certainly, you know, from the, these locations here, these, these spots, this, this provides a lot greater accessibility to, to members of the public, to, to this restaurant, to, to an opportunity to get out and to, to do something fun. And if, if we were to push those folks to the back of this building, I, I think we have a much greater chance of someone getting hurt than what we have here. I mean, we have a situation where this, this right of way has essentially been used like this for 50 years, give or take, and we just don't know of any situations where it's been a problem. So, so I think it's more of a perceived hypothetical problem than a real problem. Whereas I, I think that requiring folks with mobility issues to walk further is, is a real, more plausible problem. So I, I'm gonna support the motion.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy.
So I seconded this motion. I'm obviously supported, too, but I'm going to quibble with Commissioner Levasseur just a little bit about the relative safety risk. This is the sort of thing that, as a parent, you think about all the time. Something, a very small issue, a very small chance of risk, but an enormous risk potential. Like if, you said there's a, it's a more safety issue if there's a, if there's a difficulty with accessibility or mobility. I think it's a greater safety issue if someone gets hit, or if someone, a pedestrian or the car coming out gets hit. So to me, there's a, a very great risk with an extremely small likelihood of it happening, or a certainty of a very small risk thing happening, which is the accessibility of mobility. Now, I think you weigh it correctly, the same way that I weigh it, and I have to weigh all these things all the time as, as a parent. It's a very small chance. It hasn't happened, it seems like, in the past. But nonetheless, I think downgrading the, the safety issue is not fair. And I agree with Commissioner Douglas's assessment that this, this is a liability for the city, and we are taking a risk here. And this conversation may be revisited if someone does get hurt, and we may feel differently then than we do now.
No, I, I appreciate all those comments, and I appreciate, you know, engineering is approaching this from a very, you know, responsible, code-centric point of view. But just given the circumstances, given the location, which I think is radically different than when we were doing the Main Street's streetscape with that, with that particular retailer, and, and also the needs of the customers that, that came to that shop, this, this does not seem to be the, the same type of consideration. Or, or sacrifice on, on the city's part to, to leave this parking available, this right of way available for accessible parking. I would say as far as the risk goes, I mean, we carry a risk when we license sidewalk space to restaurateurs all up and down our Main Street, which narrows our right of way, which someone can get pushed into the street and hit by a car, because the streets, our sidewalks are narrower. It's no greater than that, and I think that this is a reasonable accommodation. I, I worked in disability rights for, for five years and inspected a lot of places for accessibility, polling places mostly all around the state. The parking does matter. I think the characterization that everyone with a disability is, is completely invalid is a, is a little bit over the top. There are certainly people that need the proximity, but the aisles are, are really what the overwhelming majority of people with disabilities need. So that's why I'm, I'm focused on making sure it's ADA compliant. It's great that it's accessible as possible. I think around the corner would, would provide a great benefit to people as well, if that's something that, you know, the, the business owner is interested in pursuing as well. That's a conversation for another day. But I think, you know, allowing this public right of way to continue to serve as a accessible point for folks visiting this restaurant and have been for half a century is, is a reasonable accommodation for us to make, with the understanding of the risk, and that engineering's recommendation is also quite reasonable. This is just where I've landed weighing this. Anybody else?
I'll just say it's, you know, been the status quo for a number of years. The spots are clearly full during hours of operation, so it's kind of like, where do you build the road? Well, where the trail is, right? So I think we've made it a little bit safer by, you know, moving the spots down a little bit, getting a little bit away from the stop sign there, which I think is the primary hazard. Yeah, there's risk in everything we do. But, you know, there's also risk in, you know, disenfranchising people that, you know, need to park here and get close to the entrance. So when you weigh the trade-offs, there's never a perfect solution, but I think this is a good solution to move forward. And, you know, the city's open to opportunities along the Woodward Avenue, you know? We got a city engineering department that is willing to work with you on the repaving of your parking lot to make sure that, you know, it's federally compliant. And even with stormwater, we have some creative things we can do, too, that I hope you take advantage of. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Pelzer. Thank you for taking time out of your schedule tonight, come out here and inform us a little bit better. I'm glad we had you come out. I'm glad we waited and had you come out here, so thank you. All right, this is, we're down to item number 14, which is the addition of the budget meeting schedules. Seems like in everything in life, trying to figure out schedules is always a challenge. I, I'll admit, you know, I kind of checked around to see if folks would be willing to push the May 15th. I know Commissioner Dubb has something. We can all open it up if there's any major conflicts. But I had something that a day later literally popped up that's really important to my children. And I'm wondering if this commission on May 15th would be open to moving the meeting from 6:30 to 7:30 start time. I know Commissioner Gibbs is also traveling, so the show, I'm sure I gotta vote down there.
My boss is very favorable, this suggestion.
Commissioner Perush.
And if the time was moved to 7:30, there is a much, much, much greater possibility that I will actually be able to attend, because my event starts at 6:00. And if I push them, which I think I can, to do the important stuff that I have to be there for early, I can probably be here by 7:30.
Commissioner Levasseur.
Just kind of curious, how much time, Don, are you budgeting for this particular meeting?
Whatever it takes.
It's just three hours-ish?
We'll prepare an agenda, and the intent will be to get through the agenda, and it's all a question of how many questions you have.
Next, next.
Usually 12 hours, Commissioner Levasseur, give or take.
Usually about two.
About, about two?
About two hours, yeah.
That's what is typical.
7:30 works great for me on that date, and I screwed up when we were discussing this last week, and I did not have some obligatory travel I am doing for work the week of the 30th. And I will not be here, so.
The whole week? The whole week?
Tuesday through Friday. I will be traveling for
So not the holiday?
Party at Kyle's house. So
Well, we have
And that's our third meeting.
That's the optional meeting.
That's the optional one.
Well, as, I mean, last year, I think we found out that we did have need of a third meeting. I feel like folks will be bringing ideas to the table, and we might actually have some more robust discussion about potential changes and amendments to the budget that'll require staff time to prepare, which means I think it's highly likely we'll be using that third stop. It's highly likely we'll need that third meeting, and I think it's probably even more important that all of us be there if, if we are gonna be, you know, offering some amendments and suggestions to the budget. So what's the drop dead date to get the budget passed on? So we're nowhere near that?
June 30th?
So we wait until June 30? I mean, should we push into the first week of June for that third meeting, or does that make you uncomfortable?
It makes me extremely uncomfortable.
Okay.
I like to always adopt the first meeting in June.
There's a public hearing requirement in there, too.
The first meeting in June is the 10th, though, right?
I can do May 22nd? I can do May 21st? Do we already nick next this week for a reason?
I'm not gonna be able to do two days in a row at 6:30, because I have an hour drive.
Oh, that's the 23rd, we already scheduled for?
Right.
What about the, do, do we not like the 20th? We did not like the 20th?
The 20th is our
We have a meeting.
It's a regular commission meeting, yeah.
Because the 20th is Memorial Day. We just start at 4:30?
All right.
21st is planning, right?
Yeah.
No, no.
No, we don't have
Oh, I thought that's what we said.
Oh, no, you're right.
21st is the fourth, First and Fourth Grade Keller concert. Very important.
Ah, yes.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, we've got planning on the 14th. We moved the city commission meeting up to the 20th from the 27th because of Memorial Day.
I'm all ears on a recommendation.
So, I don't, I don't want to raise downspud pressure, but if the city commission meeting is June 10th, couldn't we do June 3rd, the Monday?
Only if we start at 7:30.
I prefer the 3rd of June.
We're talking about specifically the, the third meeting?
The third one, if needed.
Yeah. Right.
Do we want to move that back to be the first meeting? Do, do we not like the week of May 6th? Or is it not gonna be ready by that early? Is that the concern?
I think you start sooner would be very difficult for us.
Okay.
So June 3rd, then? So June 3rd, then? 7, 7:30, what do we say?
7:30, yes, please.
Can we live with that, Mr. Johnson?
Oh, I thought you were gonna say something.
Certainly can, if that's the commission's desire.
I don't want to drive us off a cliff here, but I have to be gone for work that week.
I need to add this, too. I didn't realize when we picked the 30th, that's the end of the month, and that's my busiest time at work, like, the last day of the month.
So June 3rd would work better for you?
Yes.
I don't think I have any conflicts on June 3rd.
I'd like to make a motion that we reschedule
The 15th?
The 15th for 7:30, and change May 30th to June 3rd, also at 7:30.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion?
I just want to make sure I have it all nice and clear. We moved up one meeting to 7:30. We moved another meeting from May 30th to June 3rd at 7:30. Is that correct?
Yeah, we moved one on the 15th from 6:30 to 7:30, and then we moved the one on the 30th to the 3rd and moved it to 7:30 PM.
The three meetings are gonna be May 15th at 7:30, May 23rd at 6:30, and June 3rd at 7:30.
Yes.
That's what I have.
Okay.
Unless we can do the 23rd at 7:30, too, but I'm not gonna push that.
You can do the 6:30. I believe in you.
Drive fast.
Get your police escort.
Get your police escort. Part of the commission budget, we'll put it for next year. Helicopter.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a second? Yep. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you. Commissioner Dubb can buy dinner for staff that night, and I can buy the other night. All right, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda, if I'm not mistaken. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, or I'll make it.
You make it?
I'll make it.
Commissioner Gibbs makes it?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Macy. Is there any lengthy, healthy discussion on this motion?
Well, let me just say.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Adjourned.